Before we start this meeting tonight, is there some of the audience that like to offer a prayer? Real quick, you all for the prayer? Please, from here, that's fine, right there will be good.
Heavenly Father, we praise Him. Thank you for your goodness and all your glory and capacity, Father. Please bless our leader and our community, bless the citizens of this community and please help the needs of all this community in their need. In your mercy and great hand, thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Rude. We'll call this meeting in order at six o'clock straight up and down. Roll call.
Mayor Hicks.
President.
Counselor Reynolds, here. Counselor Moskis.
Here.
Counselor Lucero.
Here.
Counselor Padiya.
Please stand and join me in the place of justice. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remove up the agenda.
I reluctantly approve the agenda for Monday, July 30th, 2018.
Thank you. Second, third, Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Yes, Boski, Counselor Lucero, there's Counselor Padiya. Citizens to address, Chris, you're up.
I just wanted to let everybody know that we're going to be having food truck Friday over here at Fire Nights beginning this week on Friday. I have talked to several food truck vendors and they will be coming. And it'll be from 11 to 7. We'll set up tables and chairs and we hope all of you can come and enjoy it, have a great time.
Thank you. Questions? Anybody want to ask Chris a question?
Chris, are you gonna put a work order to have them bring those chairs we have in storage?
Actually, I'm gonna just grab the ones over at MOC and the tables for this week and then I'll... Because those are really, really dusty, so I'll have to have them take them over so I can wash them in the car wash.
Thank you. Charter compliance, we're not complying with the charter. Fourth Quarter Budget Adjustment Resolution, 1597.
Hi, guys.
Question before we do this.
Yes.
Did they ever finish our audit?
Oh, you're pushing it. That's number seven, number five.
Yes or no?
It's finished, I believe. It was supposed to be due to the Office of the State Auditor by tomorrow the very first. Their systems went down last week closely and I got a...
The State Auditor or the...
The Auditor, Rick and company. And so I got an email, or actually a phone call late Friday afternoon saying that their systems had gone down, that they were doing their best to try to get it finished. I got an email from them this afternoon. They have it almost done, so we're supposed to have an exit conference Thursday morning over the phone. I don't have a timer or anything definitive. I don't even have any information on what period the audit, but that is what is supposed to be happening. Throughout this whole thing, I've been in contact with the Office of the State Auditor. The guy that I talked to is called, it was Ray, Ra- 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 Allen Randall, because he was a person. Ra- Allen Randall. And he's aware of everything. I've kept him in the loop. I got all my stuff to them. I have all along, so at this point, it's in the auditor's hands and hopefully by this week, we're gonna get it finished up. So, so that was number five, so.
Now we don't have to discuss more.
Now we don't have to discuss that. No problem. So, in five, the first thing in your packet is the fourth quarter report. And, excuse me, something that I just learned with this fourth quarter report is the two that I've given to you guys before, we've done a resolution to do budget transfers. Well, the only time we need a resolution apparently to do a budget transfer is if it goes over the amount that's been budgeted to be transferred. But nobody told me that until, nobody, meaning the Department of Finance, the New Mexico Department of Finance. So, all the resolutions that we did for the second, third quarter really are irrelevant because none of them were over or under budget. So, if you'll notice, actually, you don't even have to notice it, but the Resolution 18-1597 is, all those numbers on there are for amounts that we've had to transfer from one fund to another fund that are over the budgeted amount. None of those numbers are gonna match anything on this fourth quarter, because the only thing that's on the fourth quarter is actual numbers. There's no budgeted transfer amount, so you would have to look to the original budget to see what I'm talking about here. Nothing major, it's just a little goofy thing, and from now on, we'll only have this at the end of the, at the end of the year, so on the fourth quarter, we'll always have this budget transfer request. So, if we go back to the report, a couple of things I want to point out to you guys. The column six and column seven, which is our cash balances and our investment balances. Those are the important numbers for our budget going forward to this coming year. So, I have to make sure that those are as accurate as I possibly can, because those are gonna be on the budget two pages from now that we're gonna approve in a minute for the fiscal year 19 budget. So, those numbers are gonna be identical on both pieces of paper. Column six and seven are gonna be the same on this one, and then they'll move forward to the fiscal year 19 budget. So, one thing I want to clarify is because fiscal year 17 budget has not been completed yet, I do not have actual cash balances to end 17 nor to start 18, which means I can't end 18 accurately nor can I start 19 accurately. So, basically, I have four groups of numbers that are not right because we still haven't finished fiscal year 17. What I did with this is I tried to get them as accurately as possible with the numbers that I have, but the auditors have to give us that final number, which will hopefully get done this week. I'll be able to do some journal entries, and then we'll be able to put in a budget request to judgment, judgment with the Department of Finance to get all the rest of our numbers flowing to change. So, you just need to realize that there will be another budget adjustment because the cash balances are not correct. Good news is, the number we have on here is 5.1 million, 188 million. I'm only about $20,000 off. So, that makes me really happy with this huge number. So, we'll have to find that $20,000. The auditors, they call it unlocated funds. It's, again, like I told you guys from the beginning, I don't see any, I don't see any embezzlement or any bad things happening.
Impropieties.
Impropieties. I cannot speak. I see, stuff was just not journaled the way it was supposed to be journaled. And, you know, to be only off $20,000 with a $5 million cash balance is a really good percentage, actually, considering our whole budgets, you know. You know, we have revenues of $32 million and expenditures of $32 million, so that's a pretty good number, so. So, those are about, that's about the only thing that I wanted to point out to you guys. Actually, there is one more thing. Fund number 217, from the left-hand side of this first paper is the fund numbers. If you go down this line.
Recreation.
Recreation. So, this is another one of those. Recreation is actually part of our general fund. That's where all of our salaries are, that's where all of our revenues come in, and that's where everything comes in and out. Somebody at some point in the last several years decided to put an expense there, or an expense here, or a revenue there. So, we have this negative $25,000 balance. So, what I did in this fourth quarter is I moved that $25,000 to the general fund. That's a negative, so it obviously is gonna decrease the general fund. And then from now on, there won't be any entries in that recreation fund, because it's already in the general fund.
And it should have never happened anyway.
It should have never happened in the first place, so.
These are all part of those improvisations.
Yes, that word.
I, I wonder if we had a grant at one time.
I don't know what it was.
I think we had like a juvenile program at one time, though.
The only reason it would have been in there is if it was allocated funds. And I, I can't find, and it's not, say it's not there, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I have not been able to find anything. And in the last two years, nothing has been, nothing's been entered there. This is balance from, from 17.
It seems like, I remember, we had some kind of juvenile grant that they put in recreation.
Right.
So, the talents may have been sitting in there, but it was a negative?
It was a negative, yeah. And it shouldn't have been put in there in the first place. It still should have gone to general fund unless it was something that was specially allocated. Like, for instance, you know, say that, like this, um...
The legislature's...
The legislature, or like the summer food program that the schools do, that would be something that would be special. That money's allocated just for the food program during the summer.
Well, they did do the food program for a couple of summers. Now that you say that, the rec department was in charge of that.
It's been a long time, if, from what I can find. But yeah, maybe that's what it was, so.
So, the only thing I'm noticing is that your cash balance from the quarterly report and the new, the new budget do not match. Uh-oh, two are off slightly.
Sure. I wonder, right on 5188, 7355, 722.
On mine, they're not, so.
Oh, you're looking at, you're looking at the last column? You're looking at the column, right?
Right.
Okay. That is because the system, not the system, but the state, they're the ones who created this form, and they have a different formula for the required reserves than we do. If you'll notice, the required reserves are different on both of them. If you look at the numbers on the very bottom, those are the numbers that are gonna match. 5.188 million and the investments is 7.355, 722. And those numbers are the same on both of them.
At the bottom?
At the bottom.
Mine don't match. I don't know where you're looking.
Why 188, sure they do.
5.188 there, and then the investment. They're in different, they're in different columns. It's so silly. They're the ones who created this quarterly report and the budget, but they're not in the same form.
Okay, so, okay, so I see what you're saying.
But I started talking about this, if you'll notice, these numbers are different, because they use a different reserve formula than we do. And I can't, I can't do anything with that number. It's automatically in there. I can't even get to it. Now that's explained now.
Any questions?
So, since you guys are looking at the budget to, okay, I explained, I explained, I explained everything actually already, so. So, whatever questions you guys have.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the Resolution 181597. I suppose you just must still get it in the year. And we won't have to do these no more until next year.
Until the end of the year, right.
We won't do them every quarter. That's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
I'll make a motion to approve 18-1598.
97.
97.
Second.
I second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Boski?
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padiya?
Yes.
Next. Fourth Quarter Report, Resolution 1598.
Ken is just saying you're gonna accept the report that we just talked about.
That's exactly it. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve 15-18-1598.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 181598.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Boski?
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padiya?
Yes.
Is that the one with the color, is that the one with the color on it? No.
Do you want the ones with color?
It doesn't matter. I just, I had printed, it was in color. I was gonna print it, but I didn't have it. Wait, okay.
Well, this stuff has to be turned in tomorrow.
Yes, sir, it does. That's why I need it. I need it back tonight.
That's right. We're signing it right now. There's the first one. Second one's coming. And the last one, Fiscal Budget Approval of the Resolution 181598.
Does anybody have any questions on this budget or...
You told us right, right away. We really know the budget, but it's close.
Right. And, and the actual, the original budget that we did had the 6% across the board rate on it as well. And then the cash balances are gonna be altered, so.
So financially, we're doing really, really good.
We are, we are. We're doing very well.
So, I'm asking, right now, if we're doing that good, if we could give all these...
These decisions were already made, Manny.
I know, but I'd like to see if we, if we haven't made, can you give...
It's not on the agenda. It's not.
It's part of the budget. A part of the budget.
So, I can ask for that, give the rest of the citizens and workers here an extra 2%, so they can get a total of 5% for the year.
Well, we can certainly afford it. And I know this has been very controversial. Looking back on it, I wish that I would have done something different in May. I wish I would have, I wish we would have approached this differently in May. And, and realizing that all of our citizens, all of our employees are equally important to this, to this city. And just because the police are the loudest and we're here, doesn't make them any more importantly than we are, so. And we can certainly, and we can certainly afford it.
Here's something that amazes me. Okay, this is the most important task that we're doing. Okay, we're approving $32 million for the next year. They're in a single paper in the House, okay?
Including the plates, so be careful there.
Yeah, and those chumps, those chumps that ran out on us after we gave them a 6% raise. Okay, there's no, no duty, no sense of service, no nothing from them guys. And I highly, highly regret doing that, guys.
Right.
I really do. Okay, motion on 1599.
So, let's take it back.
I wish we did. I'll entertain a motion for 181599. Approval of the...
Do you make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez? Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padiya?
Yes.
And the At-Risk, we already discussed that. Any questions on that? All that is, is waiting on the audit. I got a letter from the state saying we're fine.
Yeah, and actually, there is something I can add to that. So, in addition to everything else, today is my sixth month anniversary, by the way. And I'm gonna tell you people, I took this job because I was bored. I practiced that every day in my sanity. But, so, in addition to everything else that I've done these last six months, the Department, the State of New Mexico has decided to make a new chart of accounts, which is basically just numbering all of our accounts. So, you know, the, the cash accounts got a number, and the accounts receivables got a number, and all that. And ours right now is 162 pages long with approximately 25 accounts per page. So, you do the math. So, we have to convert our 162 pages to the state's new chart of accounts. And first of all, we have way too many accounts that we are even using. So, I've gotta clean those up, and then I've gotta do this conversion. Well, it goes hand in hand, you know, everyone knows here, actually, you guys may not know, we're getting new accounting up where, in January. We've already started preparing for it. We started training, we've been giving them papers. So, it actually works out okay, so I've got to create a new chart of accounts for them as well. So, they're gonna be the same accounts. They're gonna be what the state has, it's the same thing, it's gonna be what we have, which is gonna be a really great thing. But they wanted me to present, they wanted me to submit our budget in that format. I have, there's no way I can do that. I'll be good to get it done by September 1st, which is the final deadline. So, I was told the other day that we're, that in addition to our late audit, we also have this chart of accounts issue, and we need to get that done right away. And I'm like, I'm working on it, and I have a paper here from you, from the State Auditor, that says I have it till September 1st.
That's true.
And I will have it done by then. It may not be 100% accurate, but it will be pretty darn close, and as close as we can get it. So, anyways, I don't know what your letter said, but that is another issue that they're just freaking out over. The DFA's on, well, the State Auditor's been on, because you need to switch to that. Well, I'm only one person, I'm not the one that I'm gonna do.
And that's basically the same letter I got. And it said that we're financially sound, that we're within our budget, everything's good to go. And that's what they said. And I understand all this crap that they want. Okay, that's fine. We'll combine our accounts, what we want, what they want us to do to make it work. It's just, it's not that big of a deal. It's a big deal for you.
Right.
Okay, because you're the one that's gotta do it.
And I have a hard time not doing things perfect, but I have to get over that because...
Well, we appreciate it.
But the other part of this too is, is that even when we get the audit, you know, I don't know that it's gonna be that great.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be one of those things where we're gonna be like, it's done and over with. We've already addressed most, everything on it. We've already made huge changes. We're gonna address those, and then we're just gonna move forward.
That's right.
Because this is just too...
We can't go back.
Well, and it's just hanging over our head. It's like this black cloud.
And it's been hanging over our heads since I took over as mayor, so, okay?
Anyways.
Let's make no doubt about that, because I'm the one that threw it all into the air and said we need to fix this. Thank you, Laura, for coming on board and helping me do that. Thank you, Kimberly, for coming on board and helping me do that, because I couldn't have done it without you guys. I was losing my mind on this. But now, I feel pretty damn good about it, guys.
So, how, so how do we, how do we do this to try to give the state employees an extra 2%? Make it even 5%? Do we, do we make a motion, or because the budget will allow it?
We already approved it.
The budget will allow it, yes.
We already approved that law, I mean.
I'm asking the city council, if they would consider it.
You gotta follow this, dude.
I know it's not, but it's on the budget.
The budget was just approved. We just did it all. Okay? And you can't come in and go against what's on here, dude. You can't do it. You need to go through the training, so you can see what the hell you can do, what you can't do, Manny. Please. Okay?
Okay.
It's, it's, we're moving on. Now, where are we at? We did the At-Risk. We're at number six now, right?
Yes. So, we have chosen, we have chosen a new audit firm. We put it out for bid, and we actually had four people apply. And Laura, myself, Francis Medina, and Les Gaines, before he left, were the committee. And we interviewed all four of them. And we unanimously chose the one that we chose, which was PTO Brown and Hill out of Albuquerque. The cost is gonna be $32,250 for our fiscal year 18 audit. They, as soon as the State Auditor, as soon as you guys approve it tonight, I'm going to call our, our auditor first thing tomorrow morning and schedule him to come out sometime in August. And they've already agreed to this. We discussed this during the interview. They're gonna come out in August, because I'm discovering there's tons of year-end things that I need to do that I more needed to do, that the state wants. And so, they specialize in municipality audits. And so, they're gonna come out and help us so that we can really try to make sure that we really get fiscal year 18 cleaned up. So that when they come out and actually do the audit, they'll do a lot of pre-work in September, and they'll actually be on-site for a minimum of two weeks, anywhere of two to four auditors. And they will be out here on-site, you know, getting all the information that they need and helping us, helping us say, you know, you really should do this instead of this. They can't do things for us, but they can help guide us. And that's been one of my major struggles with this audit firm that we have right now, is because I'm so new, and I come from a private sector, not the government sector, and, you know, I don't know how some of this stuff is supposed to work. And we've asked for assistance, and they have flat-out told us, we cannot...
Well, the people that were here before, you didn't know how it worked either, though.
Well, I know that, I know that. So, my point is, though, the, the audit, this new audit firm is really, because we told them right away, you're walking into a little bit of a mess. We need some help and some guidance, getting some of these things fixed. I fixed a lot of them, but, so anyways, that's, that's our goal, to hope that we don't ever have to go through what we did again.
They'll be $32,000.
Thirty, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thirty-five per year, yeah. And it's renewable up to three years, four years, four years, it says. But each year, and it's a set price. They don't change the price every year. We just can renew it or not renew it each year.
So, is this the first time we've had an auditor?
No, oh, no.
We have auditor every year.
The first, that's, that's where it was, Mayor. Rick, the first thing I did is fire the auditors that were here, because things didn't add up for me. Okay, I'm no mathematician, I'm no auditor, but when I can catch stuff that don't add up, it didn't add up. So, I got rid of them, and we went forward, and that's why we're here today where we're at. Okay, our audits have been screwed up for four years. Without a doubt, they have been. But that's, I'm the major reason for that, because we had to shake it up and figure out where the hell we were at, what we had, and what we didn't do, and what we can't do.
So, those others back then didn't really help us?
No.
Well, they didn't help us, but the, the other issue is, is that, is that they were given Excel spreadsheets. And I love to say this, what can you put in an Excel spreadsheet? Whatever you want. Whatever you want. You print your report off of our accounting system, and you put whatever number you want in there to make it. And so, that's why our audits have passed, but they haven't been accurate. And so, anyways.
So, on that note, I want to take a motion to pay PTO Brown and Hill Auditing Firm out of Albuquerque $2,250.
I have one more question. So, this group of auditors here, why are they any different than the ones we had in the past?
These ones here, or the ones that we just got rid of?
The ones we got rid of. And why are these guys any different?
Well, we're hoping they are. We did an extensive interview. We brought in four different audit firms and personally interviewed them. And the main thing, you know, we really emphasized that we don't, we can't have a late audit. And that's the issue we're having with this firm is, we had a changeover in staff, but they had told me the audit was gonna be done the end of December. It was due December 15, so it sounded to be a little bit late, but they're just now finishing up now. And so, we've been at their mercy, so we really worked...
They did the same thing last year with these guys.
Actually, they did okay last year. We weren't late yet last year.
What happened is they had a turnover in their staff. I think is what happened.
Well, and, and yeah, that actually just came to light about two weeks ago, because they asked me for a bunch of stuff, and I said, I've already sent that to the auditor who's working on this in, like, March. Well, we never received it. So, I just forwarded the email so they could see that I sent it to him. And I don't know whether they've shared that with the State Auditor or not, but yeah, they had, they had a staff who didn't actually leave until just recently, but he was the one who was working on our audit all spring and obviously not doing what he was, anything. So, yeah, we don't know, Rick. It's gonna, it's a gamble. We're hoping that between the four of us, we chose the best one. He's really gonna care about us.
But if we didn't, we would have to do a next year, or another one.
And we'll be on him. I mean, I'll be on him right away. I mean, if he doesn't come the end of August, then, you know.
Well, and once this audit finally is done, we're gonna do a complaint to the State Auditor.
Right.
About our current auditor.
So, that way, another municipality doesn't get stuck with those guys and end up where we're at.
I mean, part, part of it was our fault, and we accepted our...
Yeah, we accepted what we did.
But they sure didn't, they sure didn't step up complaints.
Tried to wipe their butt with us, so. We can't have that.
And Fred, I apologize. Francis printed this on an old, definite shooter. I didn't read it. She, Michael's on her instead of you. I am sorry.
Yeah, I know that.
I didn't see it. I didn't see it till right now, and I was reading it. I am sorry. But this isn't something that I'm supposed to announce to you guys, so.
Okay, now, we'll entertain a motion for $32,250 to PTO Brown and Hill Albuquerque.
I make a motion that we approve this $32,250 to PTO Brown and Hill.
Second. Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
I agree with this. Okay, we got two extensions for funding.
They are both for First Street funding that we've received, and we're asking for resolutions to extend the date from December of 2018 to December 2019.
Wait, do you want to make a change on the date?
We do.
Why don't, why don't we extend the date?
Yeah, we just wanna make sure we're not gonna be at the last minute, running out of time. We, we may not need the extension, but it's better to go ahead than wait till last minute. So, the first one is Resolution 181601.
I make a motion for Resolution 18-1601?
Second.
Just like the...
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Alan there, the sec, the same thing for Phase 2 on the First Street of the next resolution.
Same thing, just till December of 19.
1602.
Right, yeah. Resolution 181602.
And all it is, is two different pots of funding. What we get the month coming back.
Yes. Both for First Street.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the Resolution 181602.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Boski?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Next one.
Is an extension resolution for the River Rock Trail Project, and basically extending it from December of 2018 to June of 19. So, Donald said the project's slated to begin construction this October and should be done by this December. But it expires December 31st, so we wanna make sure we give ourselves another six months, just in case things or weather delays or anything like that. That resolution is 181600.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 181600.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
No.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padiya?
Yes.
If nothing else, Sandy, you are consistent, and I appreciate that, without a doubt. Last one, Purchasing Policy Update at Resolution 1603.
So, we were...
So we were recommending a change to our purchasing policy, if you look at page two, it's under the E at the top, section one. We, we added in there the ability to consider procurement opportunities through cooperatives as having been bid out. So for instance, CES bids out projects, and then we could piggyback on their bids, rather than do our own, and utilize, this says we could use the state contracts, which we do when we see them, but we also have, there are several cooperatives now, and we like to use one of the cooperatives for the golf carts. They bid out, and so that's kind of what we're thinking, is to help us without trying to do our own formal bidding for golf carts.
Yeah, these are just another way of government, government contract.
Exactly, and we can come on the CES, we can come on the state contract, or any other.
Yeah, we can bring discount too.
Yes.
Yeah. So we're requesting your approval of our resolution eighteen sixteen oh three, to update our purchasing policy.
Questions?
Does it still need item?
That's the only thing that's changed on it. The rest of it really follows state procurement, we're easily following their guideline.
I make a motion that we approve resolution eighteen that sixteen oh three?
Second.
Resolution?
Councilor Wells?
Yes.
Yes, Voski, Councilor D'Serro?
Yes.
Councilor Paliya? Your answer, Laura?
I, I kind of wanted to give you a heads up and see if I have your support, but over the last probably two years, I've had a couple of calls from businesses, and I had one today, that are indicating that the trees that we planted along the sidewalks are blocking their sun. So the one that complained today was State Farm down on this end of town. The complaint was that you couldn't see around the tree, you could pull out. And the other that it's blocking the sign, they weren't the tree totally taken out. So I went down there, and you can see, the tree is high enough, you can see to pull out, that was no problem. It was blocking the sign on one direction, but if you're driving the other direction, the sign can be seen. But the windows on the business have big signs that say State Farm. So no matter how you're looking, when you can't see the sign, you can see it on their windows. So my thing is, if I do for one, I've got to be willing to do for all, because they talk to each other.
How many did you have?
I've had, I've had.
Sarah?
Two, really, and one other that just wanted it trimmed, and we did trim one. But I, but, well, a long time ago, we had one down on the end of town. But they took it out, they said they had planted them at that time, and I did see that businesses planted their own, they let me know. But, you know, if we do for one, we got to be like, I, since I got the first complaint, I've been looking in Albuquerque. Albuquerque has trees along their major ways like we do, and, yeah, they block the signs at point, but you can tell what the business is, you know, as you drive by, you can see on the front, or it's not totally blocked.
When, when we started putting these trees in, I had a concrete tree, okay? And the purpose for it was to make it more walker-friendly, to make it shaded, to make it better for people that were going to walk downtown, or going to walk our town. I personally don't have a problem with the trees, I really don't. I think it adds to the beauty of the town, and for the parades and stuff like that, it gives people places to sit and shade.
We spent a lot of money on those.
We spent a lot of money on those trees, and like I said, I guarantee you, I planted over half of them over five years that I had that concrete tree. I understand the concept behind it, and I don't want to see it taken out. That's where I'm at on that, any comments for you guys?
So you say it's a safety issue, or?
Well, they tried to make it that way, when you put it on there and you look at, just drive to the parking lot and drive out. The trees are up here, it's only this big around, okay, you know, it might be that big around.
The one prison building, yeah. Yeah, I looked, because if, if it is a safety hazard, we have been trimming, if it's people walking on the sidewalk, and you can't get by them, we're trimming the lower ones. But this one, in one direction, you can see the sign, in the other direction, you can't, but you can see the ones on the windows, so you can see very clearly what the building is, any way you drive. And then plus, your Siri or your Google Map tells you how to get there, that's what mine did. So, yes, I don't know, Barbara would just say so.
Go ahead, Laura.
One of my concerns is that we often don't, we often do not have addresses on the, on the buildings. And so people that are looking for a specific address, if there are, if we could establish.
We'll ensure that that gets done through Mr. Windhorse, because every building by ordinance is required to have an address on it, for firefighters and police officers to be able to find it. So we'll ensure that that takes place.
In fact, I think that might even solve some of the stuff with the trees, because if they put a sign on their building that has their address on it, then people are going to be able to locate it, that's just a comment.
Well, Robert Hayes, the fire chief, did something a couple of years, well, four years ago, because I was at the family center. He came around and told us we had to have our addresses up. So maybe we need to do that again, because it is a requirement, and he kind of let businesses know that didn't.
But that might solve some of the tree problems, maybe.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because these people are going to be mad at me, and they're going to be calling you next.
Tell them to call us, tell them to call me, it's no big deal.
Well, if it's only one or two guys, address the problem, trim the branches.
Trim the branches back, then let's go with it. You know, we've even been doing that in the residential areas where the branches hang down. If you're ducking your head, we're cutting the branches. I say, we don't care whose tree it is, if it's an inconvenience to the public walking on our public roads, we're going to cut the trees back.
It took a long time for the guys to.
No, and I, I'm with you, I mean, and it makes the town look better, guys.
I stand the Fourth of July every once.
Sydney, you got anything?
Oh, I did. I, I went to a meeting, and one of the, one of, they asked me to address the council, because nobody else would, they're afraid of us.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, one was.
Got no teeth on lightning.
I know. Increase the lighting on Mesa, especially at the, it, it is dark. I mean, I lived there, and people do, do walk there, or they bicycle, and it is really dark at night. Especially the green, where the green.
Where the green is?
Where the green belt is.
Okay.
Someone even suggested solar lights or something.
We've got two lights in that entire area there.
It, it's just, it's just dark, and I, I said, someone suggested, you know, solar, and I said, I thought we were switching to LEDs, but I don't know.
Well, there's, there's LEDs, so.
Yeah, so we could, you know, maybe think about that at some, some time. The other one is, don't yell. But it's about, this area does not have a pet cemetery.
You know, we had that brought up by Mr. De Herrera a few years ago.
And maybe it would be a county thing, because, I mean, they talked about the city, because the city already has a cemetery and would know the rules, but maybe it would be better to have this Sabola County Pet Cemetery or something, the county should maybe do something. And then I thought maybe it could be a joint effort, you know, but no, no city and village and county joint thing. It doesn't seem to be successful.
Don't you think it was successful, that was the state plan?
Well, so, so maybe just to start thinking about maybe a pet cemetery. Some of us, well, minor on cremated, but some people would like to have their animals put somewhere, that they're going to stay there, where it's going to be maintained, instead of somebody starting. And the third thing is, the doggy, the doggy dispensers, they had the dog park is fixed. They had the boxes of the, the plastic bags, that thing was, was broken, but it's all fixed now. And then I don't, you know, and it was broken for a bit, and I don't know what people were doing with the boxes of the poopy bags. But it's all fixed, so people can't steal them.
That's good.
Yeah, so. And the park is looking good.
Yeah, you know, the Mesa Park, since they put the, the dog pickups over there, there's a whole lot of this, these.
I, and I see some people actually use these stations.
And it makes me smile.
I do know, I do know, because I travel that a lot, and I know one woman and her dog that use it regularly.
Manny?
I would like Laura for putting those handrails on the post office, let walkway, thank you, Laura. And then take our car to the game room.
Rick?
Yeah, I know we've talked about doing some improvements to the golf course as far as the car path. So I'd like to move forward and start planning to do like six holes this year. You know, whatever we decide to do, whether we asphalt or concrete.
Crusher finds?
Yeah, well, something that's going to.
Crusher finds turns into concrete.
Because otherwise, you're working on it every other year to.
Crusher finds turns into concrete, doesn't it? You wet it down and pack it, it turns into concrete.
Yeah, some of those areas need some drainage work, you know, to withstand the water that's there, so. Got to do that going on a few holes, I'm sure.
So if we try to do concrete, we don't have anybody on board that?
Not only that, to drive a concrete truck out there through the golf course is going to tear shit up to do that.
Well, that's true.
Concrete truck weighs way, 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 way much. But if we put up sightings, and we put the crusher finds in there, and wet it down and pack it, it'll work like a champ, guys. I can show it to you at the mine, we drive on it every day.
That's fine.
With pickups, and it doesn't come apart.
It's going to be a lot better than.
And those drainage parts that you're talking about, I know what you're talking about, where the water stands next to the cars.
Yeah, it's true.
All that takes is the golf cart, guys, the golfer, the people that are working there, you take a shovel and dig it out.
Dig it out, but whatever, yeah.
Dig the grass out, it'll drain. I mean, that's, that's a simple fix, and.
Or they need to raise that area with the crusher finds and dirt away.
Yep, so it stays in the ground.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's, yeah, let's start the conversation.
Anything else? Brett?
We're, we're working on yours. Yeah, I already told them that that mystery.
Well, the water goes up, coming out of the deal there, that's a run down the ditch. You see a mosquito there now, that's human.
Right, and the mosquito truck is out, we've been out since day.
There's a lot of the water coming out of the deal there, it goes that way, it's flooded, not flooded, but there's a little wall.
Right.
It's not a wall, it's standing wall, it's stench.
So that'll have to be our, our street department that works on that, and they're working on saving, so. I did put a work order in for them.
I don't need to. It's a wall, there's a wall, it's stench, stench, you know that.
Yeah, and Mark just came on board, Mark Teshma, and so he'll be a good resource for our crews, kind of help guide them.
I think you guys can check on that wall at the cemetery, the building over there. The city took six pieces of concrete blocks, and they were going to just stack them like that, they're going to fall, so I just shoot grade, and see how, how tall, how high it is. It's four foot, exactly, four foot one inch.
So you kind of show them what you thought?
And take that dirt off, and then we'll do the side, and then we'll come, then we'll base.
Whatever you want.
Just put it there, Rick.
No problem, I can go.
Don't complicate it.
Get any structure out of it.
Okay.
I want to take a motion, we'll just meet now.
Make a motion?
Second.
Second.
All at their favor, say aye. Aye. Have a good night, thank you very much. Here you go, Brenda.